Good morning, everyone. Hello, hello, I'm Dan Grotnick, Chair of the City Planning Commission, Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's public meeting. Today's date is February first, 2023. Today, we're going to be voting on a mix of new housing opportunities and a couple of landmarks, among other items. The housing proposal is a 100% affordable building with about 200 homes, 30% of them supportive, and an onsite health center in Bathgate in the Bronx. As for the two landmarks, they are Samuel Gompers Industrial High School, also in the Bronx, in St. Mary's Park, as well as Julius's Bar Building in Greenwich Village in Manhattan. Moving on to today's hearings, we also have housing and landmarks on the table for today. We'll start with public testimony on the proposed Melrose Parkside Historic District, located in Prospect-Lefferts Gardens, Brooklyn. Having already received approval from the Landmarks Preservation Commission, the City Planning Commission sign-off would be the next step in creating this historic district that would include 38 homes built between 1909 and 1915. Also in Brooklyn, today's housing hearing is on a proposal in Gravesend that would bring about 20 new homes, a quarter of them permanently income restricted under the city's mandatory inclusionary housing program. The building includes resilient features to raise its mechanicals above the height of potential floodwaters. The elevation is made easier by our zoning for coastal flood resiliency rules, which were adopted by the City Council in 2021. So we're glad to see that plan at work. So with that, Madam Secretary, let's get started and kick off this meeting.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal and in person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway, Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, February first, 2023. I will now call the roll. Chair Grotnick.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Present.
Commissioner Bozark.
Here.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Here.
I believe we have Commissioner Crowell on Zoom.
Correct, yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Here.
Commissioner Gold.
Here.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Here.
Commissioner Kramani.
Here.
Commissioner Marden is on Zoom.
That is correct, and I am here.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
And Commissioner Rampershad is on Zoom.
Correct, and I'm here.
A form is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, January 18th, 2023.
Okay, thank you very much. On the minutes, I make a motion to approve the minutes of Wednesday, January 18th. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice Chairman has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Minutes are approved.
Scheduling. Calendar numbers one through 11. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, February 15th, 2023, for a public hearing to be held in person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway, and remotely through the NYC Engage Portal.
On the resolutions, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gold, thank you. Anyone opposed? I'm sorry, all those in favor, let's start with that.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page seven. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 12 and 13, 521 East Tremont Avenue, CD 6. Calendar number 12, C 220306ZMX. Calendar number 13, N 220307ZRX. And the matter of an application for a zoning map and zoning text amendment concerning 521 East Tremont Avenue, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 12 and 13. Chair Grotnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 12 and 13. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number 14, the Samuel Gompers Industrial High School, CD 1, N 230166HIX. And the matter of a communication regarding the landmark designation concerning Samuel Gompers Industrial High School, on the adoption of calendar number 14 for referral to the City Council. Chair Grotnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar number 14 has been adopted for the referral to the City Council. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 15, Julius's Bar Building, CD 2, N 230167HIM. And the matter of a communication regarding the landmark designation concerning Julius's Bar Building, on the adoption of calendar number 15 for referral to the City Council. Chair Grotnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar number 14 has been adopted for the referral to the City Council. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 16 and 17, 75 Hilltop Terrace, CD 2, calendar number 16, N 230061ZAR. Calendar number 17, N 230062ZAR. And the matter of an application for the grant of authorization concerning 75 Hilltop Terrace, for the adoption on calendar numbers 16 and 17. Chair Grotnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozark.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 16 and 17 have been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page nine.
Great, well, thank you very much, and we're going to ask those who are testifying today to limit their remarks to three minutes. And I am going to ask you, Madam Secretary, to call the first item on the agenda for today's public hearings.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 18, Melrose Parkside Historic District, CD 9, N 230177HK. Public hearing, and the matter of a communication regarding the historic district designation concerning Melrose Parkside Historic District.
Great, I see four people who are signed up to testify on this item, a couple of them in the room and a couple of them via Zoom. So we're going to start with them in the order that I have them, and we're going to welcome Diane Lent to the podium up here. Diane Lent, welcome. Whenever you are ready and settled, there's a little button at the base of the microphone. When it is green, if you push the button and make it green, then you will be able to be heard.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Very pleased to be here. I have been working on this project for six years and did a lot of the research on the history, which I'll note, we called it Melrose Parkside because the mansion and the estate that's on the, was on the land, actually where my own house is now. And in the mid-19th century, that's, it was called Melrose Hall and was very famous and had a lot of celebrities visit it. But in the end of the, in the Revolutionary War era, it was a home owned by a loyalist, and according to the history, there were American prisoners that were housed there. And so the story goes that there are many ghosts in the area, just for interest there. Then the, it changed hands a few times, and it was, the block was actually developed in the very, very early 20th century. I know the house I'm in was built in 1909, and there are three different types of houses, some two-family houses, some two-story houses, some three-story houses, and then the ones I live in are called Kinko Houses. And they are four-story houses with two separate apartments, and they're, they have two separate entrances. And the, I hope you have some photos, I didn't bring any photos, but the architecture is very unique and very unique in New York City. And so we chose to work to, through Landmark Commission, to have these kept. We are part, not, we are part of Prospect-Lefferts Garden, but two blocks away from the actual landmark district, which is one of the first landmark districts in New York City in the 1970s. But we're separated by some that aren't so particularly interesting architecturally, and so we applied for our block, just the block, just the houses on the block and not the apartment buildings. So the houses were built, yeah, they were built in the early century. The one, one thing that's happening in our neighborhood in the non-landmark areas, our houses are being, old houses are being torn down and sort of modern apartment buildings are being built. Sometimes they're just, take up one or two lots, and they're very thin and not particularly interesting architecture. We had a threat, a particular threat on our block that tenants were evicted, and apparently the owner of this one house died and his, his very young daughter inherited the house. And from what I understand, there was some deed fraud and some, oh, well, anyway, we were very-
Tell us what happened with the deed fraud. I'll pose the first question.
Okay, but someone, someone bought the house who wanted to tear that house down to build a driveway into a new building in, on Clarkson behind it. And apparently that didn't happen. I'm not sure who owns the house now, I'm not sure how, what that happened, but the project is no longer viable. So we did not lose any houses, but that spurred us on to continue to push for this. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Let me just note before you, there may be some questions, I don't know, but before you go, let me just tell you that we do have lots of images, and we have been through the details with the Landmarks Commission, and want to thank you for your work and advocacy on this project. It is certainly a beautiful and well-maintained piece of New York City history, and so I did want to note that, hope the ghosts are friendly if you do encounter them. I hope, I expect that they would be. Commissioner Duick.
Yeah, thank you. So I think one of the concerns that comes up when we landmark areas is that we impede the development, which could, would create much needed housing. So are you saying that every member of the, every owner of the house, that is, of a house that is being, or property that is being, is part of this landmark area is on board with this designation?
Almost all of them, but no, not every member. There's been some opposition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gold.
Just as a follow-up, can you speak a little bit on what the opposition has been? Is it, is it financial, is it the ability to create more housing, or, you know, whatever, if they've wasted, if you can say?
I, the, one person in particular, maybe he's testifying today, is, wants to build, he's, he's got three-story houses, and he wants to build up on his house, and was concerned that this would prevent it.
Got it, got it, thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just, I'm not sure if he's going to testify, so maybe you know the answer. When you say he wants to build up on his house for his own benefit or for creating new units?
For, I believe for his own benefit, to have additional apartments to rent.
Okay, creating new units, thank you so much.
Thank you, okay, thank you very much, Ms. Lent, we appreciate it. Let me move on to Norma Williams, who is with us by Zoom.
It appears Norma Williams is not in Zoom today. Not in the Zoom room.
Not in the Zoom, okay. Let's move on to Jesse Miller. Jesse Miller, welcome.
Chairman Grotnick and Commissioners, thank you. So let's get right to a couple of questions here. Number one, do these homes deserve the landmark status? And I think the Landmark Commission has clearly determined that to be true. I should just, I jumped ahead. I live at 359 Parkside Avenue, which is one of the three-story homes here. A big one, do these homes need landmark status? And I would say, just simply, you look around our neighborhood, and the answer is obvious. Single-family wood frame homes are being routinely torn down and replaced with apartment houses, many cheaply constructed and flat-out ugly. As for our row, our row houses, the main thread is the addition of one or more stories on top of the house, always out of character, and again, ugly, and this is happening on blocks all around us. Something you asked before, are the homeowners in favor? I would say by and large, the majority are, as evidenced by the number of signatures on our original petition that set this process in motion. I don't think you can ever have 100% of homeowners. And Diane spoke about the one homeowner who's the most opposed. If you have any questions about that, I'll answer that. Okay, do people outside of our district who live nearby favor it? I will just simply say that the homes have gardens in the front of them, very lovely, if you keep them up, and when I'm gardening in front of my house, I can't tell you how many people stop to chat and say how much they appreciate the beauty of the block, and that they go out of their way to walk the block while they're going to and from the subway to get to work. There is a practical and political matter, which I've sort of heard, referred to here, will this designation negatively impact the administration's desire to create more housing and more public housing? Again, simply take a look around our neighborhood, a look around the neighborhood reveals a frantic pace of development, and it's impossible, really, that the designation of 38 private middle-class homes on one block, 20 of which actually contain rental units, will hold back or impede this trend. And then one little thing that came to my mind is, I know we're not here to debate whether this city needs landmarks, but I did notice when I walked into the lobby today, we're in one, it makes you feel great when you're in that lobby. And also, last night, I attended a wonderful piano recital at Carnegie Hall, I'm sure you know the history of that, and I could merely also say Penn Station, so, yeah. To sum up, my wife and I brought 359 Parkside Avenue, 1984, 38 years ago, on a block of beautiful homes that spoke to us. I've always felt that as owners, we are in some way-
Just, why don't you finish your sentence?
Yeah, it's just a sentence. Only caretakers with the responsibility to preserve and pass this home on to its next caretaker. And I feel strongly that landmarking will help make this happen, and I urge you to approve this proposed district. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Let me see if there are questions or comments. Thank you for joining us today, we appreciate it very much. Next up is Cheryl Sealy, who is registered on Zoom and is present, great. Present on Zoom, that is. Ms. Sealy, we're going to call you up and get you ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go, go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cheryl Sealy. One moment, just give me one second here, I'm so sorry. Okay.
That's okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I am a longtime resident and homeowner on Parkside Avenue. I've watched our community disseminated by overdevelopment. Homes are on adjoining blocks destroyed to make way for new and out-of-context development. The early years had its struggles, but today we are facing a new challenge of gentrification, overdevelopment, and destruction of existing homes. Parkside Avenue has experienced the same struggles and threats. We are a diverse block of just, of not just private homes, but also homes, a home to a large amount of rent-stabilized apartments, including two HDFC buildings. Parkside Avenue is not just fighting to save the homes on the block, but to preserve a homogeneous and caring community that we have created throughout the years. I urge the City Planning Commissioners to agree with the Landmark Commission to designate our block landmark. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Let me see if there are any questions or comments. Commissioner Goodrich.
I just had a general question. I looked up a little bit about the style of homes, and I think they're called Kinko Style Homes, and I wanted, I think there's a little bit of background with, I think there are only one or two architects that designed these homes, and I was wondering if anyone knew a little bit more background about it, and if there's any specific history about the style of these homes.
I think Diane will answer.
Go ahead, you can answer, Ms. Sealy, if you, if you are able, go ahead.
Diane did a lot of the research, she's the best, best person to answer, Diane Lent.
So we, yeah, we, yeah.
We're going to test them on it.
Yeah, we can, we can, actually, we may have this already from Landmarks Commission, but we will, we'll find out the answer for you, that's okay. Thank you. And with that, I do not see, Madam Secretary, anybody else signed up to testify on this item, calendar 18, is that consistent with your understanding? Okay, great, well, with that, we will close the hearing on calendar 18, the Melrose Parkside Historic District, and thank all of you for being here with us today, and also on Zoom. We appreciate your, your time and your advocacy very much. And let's move on to the next item on the calendar today.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 19 and 20, 58 Nixon Court rezoning, CD 13, calendar number 19, C 210170ZMK, calendar number 20, N 210171ZRK. Public hearing, and the matter of an application for a zoning map and zoning text amendment concerning 58 Nixon Court rezoning.
Great, let us get started.
Chair, I'm recused in this matter?
Okay, Commissioner Rampershad is recused on 58 Nixon Court. Thank you for the notes. And we have an applicant team, and I see Eric Pilatnik at the microphone, and we also have Nellie Hennessy, Austin Corey, and Ian Rasmussen as part of the applicant team, but it seems that perhaps Mr. Pilatnik, you will be doing the heavy lifting today, so we're going to turn to you whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much, and thanks a lot for your time, and thank you all for your dedication to what you're doing. Good morning, my name is Eric Pilatnik, and I want to thank you for having me today. I'm representing the owners of 64 Nixon Court. I'm here today to tell you a story, and it's got very little to do with the building that's in front of you, although that's the subject that we're here for. Now, you've all seen the presentation yesterday, on Monday, I watched the review session, I think you know the building that we're proposing, a nine-story, nine-story building in our 7X district. It was a mistake made, though. At the very beginning of the application, three years ago, when we started the application, when a bunch of us sat down at a desk, and we looked at the block, it's an R5 zoning district, it shouldn't be an R5, it's Coney Island Avenue across from Coney Island Hospital, on the Belt Parkway, should be an R7 or an R8. Whenever we looked at it, everybody said, let's make it an R7X. The reason we said, let's make it an R7X, is because that tall building you're sitting there behind, 12 stories tall, would fall into compliance. If you go to planning school, that makes perfect sense, the maps look great, the applicant was happy, I went to go meet with the community board, they were happy, everybody was happy, seemed like a great idea, backfired on us. Plus, forward three and a half, four years later, all the political shift has changed, things have changed, and when we went back to the community board, and we spoke with the councilman, everybody said, you know what, can you make it a seven-story building? I said, sure, I'd be happy to make it a seven-story building, because ULP is there to allow everybody to engage in everything, I'd be happy to, we'll have the councilman cut it at the end, no big deal. We spoke to Councilman Ari Kagan, Ari Kagan said, no, I can't cut it at the end. I said, why not, Councilman, why can't you cut it at the end? He said, I need the community board to support it. Now, you're in a pocket of Brooklyn, that's Eastern European and Ukrainian, we're all watching world events, for good reason, people have a distrust of government. So, there's a lot of talk at the community board, Pilatnik, we like you, we trust you, but we think you're really representing the 12-story building, and you're pulling the wool over our eyes. Why? Because no reasonable human being would subject themselves to four years' worth of ULP to go through for a 3,000 square foot lot, to build a seven-story square foot building, you must be representing the taller building. I go, no, I'm not representing the taller building. They go, you can't prove it. I go, Ari Kagan said, he'll cut it at the end, that'll prove it to you, it'll be cut out, it'll become, cut out. They go, we don't trust that that'll actually happen. I said, I'll cut it. And I called up Department of City Planning, Department of City Planning said, nah, not such a good idea to cut it. So I'm here today to ask you to cut it. I know it's antithetical to your philosophy, I know you're here to create the most amount of housing it can get, but this is King Solomon. If I can't go back to the community board and prove to them that I got the building cut, and get a vote of support out of them, which they're willing to have me, we've had seven or eight different meetings, I met with the whole committee, the lead person on the community board, not the lead, but one of the most outspoken persons, a woman named Elena, who runs the Coney Island Business Improvement District, promised me that if we bring the application, I show her that it's an R7A, that'll make her content. That was the opposition that I had at the community board, not all of it, but the most of it. The rest of the opposition at the community board were people that didn't want to see another stitch of housing ever built in New York City, they think it's overdeveloped, and if you listen to the testimony of all three public hearings that I went to, you'll hear every single objector testify to the fact that there are too many people in New York City, and they don't want any more. Those were the main objectors. The real issue at play was the 12-story building next door that was going to be enlarged. So what I'm asking you today, as a part of my obligation, and I'll continue on now with the presentation, to consider, and I know it's antithetical to your philosophy, I know your philosophy is to create housing, the most amount of housing, but I'm asking you to consider what has occurred here, and I'm asking you to consider the ULP process, which is doing exactly what it was set out to do. I looked up Wikipedia of ULP, you should all read, it's pretty interesting. Basically, what it says is it's a democratizing process that allows the community to have input, and allows the stakeholders to modify the proposals so that everybody is content. I'm at the end of ULP, I spent three or four years meeting with everybody, I didn't come to this position out of ignoring everybody. Everybody's entitled to change their minds, my wife reminds me of that every single day. What I'm asking you to do is to consider what changed here, what people's concerns are, and that the proposal that I'm about to show you, which is a seven-story building creating 16 units of housing, four units of affordable housing, only one less than was proposed in the R9, R7X proposal, I think I'm still meeting your goal, our goal, the city's goal, which is to create housing, create a lot of it, and to take pocket properties such as this, which has sat dormant for all of our lives, and develop it. So having said that, thank you for listening to me, I'll click through the presentation quick, next slide, please. The slide looks like a park, you can see it here, it's about 3,000 square feet, it's an R5 Ocean Parkway sub-district. Here you can see the two different proposals that we've been dealing with, or working through at the community board, the R7X is our proposal before you, the R7A is what we've said to them. Next slide, please. This shows you the work that we've done at the community board, we spent a lot of time making efforts to secure their support. I've really whittled it down to this one issue, and it's been very friendly, just like these hearings. I mean, it's been, they're like, Pilatnik, we like you, you're very nice, but we don't trust you. At the end of the day, and I don't blame them, I'm watching the war in Ukraine, I understand why people in that region have come, or where Brighton Beach Hells from, I can understand why they might not trust everything everybody's always telling them, they want to see it. Next slide, please. This slide is very telling, this shows you, I'm not asking you to trim it by much, the building is just going down from an R7X that admittedly we shouldn't have done at the beginning. We were never asking for an R7X building. Our building never maxed out under the R7X, we were doing it to make the map right, and it was the right thing to do. As a planner, I believe in it, but it's not working in the real world, so I'm trying to modify it. These numbers show you, the building just comes down a few, it's five units less, the bottom two rows on the right-hand side show you the difference. 21 under the R7X, 16 units under the proposed, five affordable, four under the proposed. So, yeah, you're losing five dwelling units, but you're gaining 16, you're losing one MIH, but you're gaining four. That's the lens I'm asking you to look at, to give this a fighting shot. Next slide, if we can go to the plaza, please, you can keep clicking ahead, it's coming It's coming out right there. I could pause there. Austin, do you want to speak for a minute about what you did with the community board here? Austin is here. Austin Corey's a planner, and he worked with us on the community board. There was much concern that that line running through the trees there, which is the on-ramp to the Belt Parkway, was going to somehow be impeded during construction. Austin, do you want to tell them what you put together here on this slide?
Yeah, sure. So, hi, I'm Austin Corey. I'm an urban planner with Urban Cartographics. And as Mr. Pilatnick said, we did meet with the community board extensively about the project, and we just want to affirm that the on-ramp to the Belt Parkway will not be affected in any way during construction, and if any caging does need to occur, it would affect no more than two parking spaces along Nixon Court, which is actually kind of a redundant one-way westbound street as it relates to the on-ramp anyway in this part of Brooklyn. So, we just wanted to affirm with this slide that it was, construction would not affect the Shore Parkway on-ramp at all.
Thank you very much, Austin. Austin just got his planning, graduated from planning school and got his, I don't know what the exact title is, think certification. But Austin was speaking to the fact that these were the issues that we spoke about at the community board. It wasn't a patent no. There was a series of realistic questions about the quality of life during construction that we could address. So I feel as if I come back to them now with a building that's at the size that they asked for, we would get their support, or I hope we would. And they've given us the time to come back to them, and thank you for the time you're giving me today. If we could skip forward, I'll show you the park at the front, or the open area. Pause right here for a second. This shows you the two different buildings. The top is the R-seven A that's proposed. The bottom is the R-seven X, or the bottom is the R-seven X that was proposed. Top is the alternative. Again, I'm trying to show you here, the difference is minimal. I know your mandate is to create the most amount of housing, but I'm not asking you to reduce it that much. It's an R-five district now. It deserves to be more. Next slide, if we can go to, these are the green features to speak to Commissioner Osorio's questions yesterday. Do you want to speak to these, Nellie, actually? I know Nellie is on the phone, and she could speak to the sustainability features. Can you hear Nellie?
Sure, yes. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Great.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I'm Nellie Hennessy from Caliendo Architects. I'm here to testify that we are providing sustainable features for this job. We have a solar ready and a green roof. We're going to provide E V chargers. And in the parking and surface will be geopave system, which is a permeable paver that promotes natural stormwater infiltration, reducing runoff and reducing the need for detention or retention on-site. We're also in the flood area, and the first, the residential lobby and all mechanical systems will be raised above that floodplain elevation. The commercial area, I'm sorry, just finished the commercial section.
Sorry, Nellie, just to take your time, I was going to ask if you could fast forward to the park, the plaza area in front with the open area that you're creating?
Sure.
Next slide, please. May I show it? Or you could just describe the park area that you're creating in the front? We'll get the slide there in a second.
The Ocean Parkway special district requires that you're set back from Ocean Parkway about thirty feet, and thus, we have done here. And that, but section is a small triangle. It'll be planted and so that it won't be paved or any kind of that. It will be like an open area landscape.
Thanks, Nellie. We're out of time right there. You hit the mark, and if the person controlling the screen could just get to one of the renderings, we could show that plaza area. And just for the commission's benefit, that was also created in discussions with the community board. There's a bus stop right there. And if you get to one of the proposed renderings, you'll see that we've created a plaza at the front, both to comply with the Ocean Parkway sub-district as well as to comply with the community board's requests. And you can see it on the left side there, but there's a better image of it than some of the other renderings. If I click forward, you get the one that looks from above like a bird's eye. There you go. Pause right there, that little triangle. So good. My time is over.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for listening to our impassioned plea.
Okay. Thank you. And I know that there are questions, and I'm going to ask a couple of my own, and then I'm going to start with Commissioner Dweck. So, Mr. Pilatnick, this is a, it's an unusual request that you bring to us today. I will note, it's the first of its kind that I have seen in my long one-year tenure of the commission.
I'm sorry to be the one to bring it.
And I wanted to just make sure that I understood it first, so my questions are just going to focus in on that. As you noted, our mission here is to certainly create housing, but also get the zoning districts correct. So that's sort of, it's a two-part process for us. You are presenting to us today that the community board here wants the R-seven A scenario, not the R-seven X scenario. Is that right?
And I'll just clarify, because I do not have a community board vote of support, so I don't want to misrepresent. It's my belief from spending hours upon hours in conversations that the R-seven A proposal will garner the support of the community board.
And what if you're wrong, Mr. Pilatnick? What if we were to make a change, and you are wrong about that assessment?
I could be wrong. I could be very wrong on that, and I could lose at the community board, in which case the application will lose at that point.
Okay.
Because the councilman has indicated he won't support it without their support. So I'm either going to lose it today on this hearing, where it stays in an R-seven X, which is a hundred percent unapprovable, or I could be given a fighting chance. And bear in mind, just so you know from a personal point of view, I'm in no desire to go back to the community board. Personally, I'd rather have it be done. I have a trip planned to Disneyland, Disney World with my ten-year-old son, the day of the community board meeting. So I have no desire to tell him to go with my wife, and that I'll see them later. But I do believe, based upon my conversations, that that week of February fifteenth, February twentieth, the community board is, that I will be able to get their support. I've been working closely with their land use committee, and as I mentioned, I've been working closely with the head of the Business Improvement District. I've been trying to satisfy everybody's concerns, and I could be wrong, though, and I wouldn't want you to take a risk or do make a decision based upon my hope that I would get it, because I'm not representing them at will.
Right. And if the, just, the process here allows for the community board to have whatever view it wishes to have, and then the council to make amendments to this proposal, is that correct?
You are a thousand percent correct, and that is a discussion that we've been having with a lot of different interested stakeholders, that the council has the opportunity to cut it. But as I expressed to you a moment ago, the beautiful thing about New York City, and speaking of Disney World, it's the epicot of the country, and every single neighborhood is different, and every single neighborhood of us here has different cultural norms. The cultural norms, as I expressed to you here, are such that it would feel, I wanted to cut it myself before the hearing. We didn't have time after to do an A case. We would, they would like to see it in print, and that's what is driving the request here, is just to see it in print. I can understand the predicament it puts your commission in, and of course, I wouldn't expect you to do whatever you don't feel is right, but that's the basis.
And if the council were to make the change from the R-seven X to the R-seven A, do you believe that would be in scope?
Yes, it would be within scope. They'd have the authority to do it. It would be up to the councilman to decide whether or not he would want to do it.
Okay. Okay. And I know we don't have the community board testifying here today, and we don't have the council member testifying here today either. Let me go to Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. I was going to ask you a question about the retail, but I'll get back to that first. Let's go to, just down the zoning. Would it be possible, and I'm trying to advance the item before we get to a post-hearing review, to cut your spot to an R-seven A and maintain the R-seven X designation so that the other site becomes, comes into conformity?
No, because the issue that's occurring is that the community does not want to see that building be enlarged. What U-LR-P worked, U-LR-P worked. What came out of five hearings, and unfortunately, it was at the very end of the process, not at the beginning when I was first there, was that people don't want to see that building have any chance, the twelve-story, of being enlarged. The only district that could legalize that building is an R-seven X. That would allow that building to be enlarged. It lets it go up to, I believe, a hundred and forty-five feet maybe, and it lets it achieve a floor area that would allow it to add about two more floors. The discussions at the community board were, two more floors in that building are worth a couple of million dollars, and Pilatnick, as I said before, you must be representing them. So what we're trying to demonstrate is that we are not seeking to have that building benefit.
What's the financial feasibility of them actually enlarging an existing building?
I can't tell you what that is, but that wouldn't change the conversation that happened at the community board thirteenth.
So the community board is, is, is dead against the R-seven X?
They were dead against anything, any benefit accruing to that adjacent property. That was the crux of, really, I mean, I can't, that's why I can't guarantee that they'll approve it, but that was the crux of it. They thought that the benefit being attributed, being given to that building was not appropriate.
You know, from my personal opinion, I'd agree that the community board is right in an R, well, we assume that the community board is looking at an R-seven A, and I think that designation is more in line for that area. I know it very well. Again, it doesn't answer the issue of making the other building into, come into conformity. Okay, can we speak about the retail for a second?
Sure.
I know Ocean Parkway has pretty much no retail, if maybe one or two.
Yeah, there's two. There's two little sandwich shop, and there's a coffee shop.
And so, what, this obviously would introduce retail, more retail to Ocean Parkway. Can you speak to the use that would be there?
Be happy to. So there was a lot of talk about this. This is a very, for those of you who are familiar with the area, you probably know it's a very heavily pedestrian area. The bus stop is right there, that underpass underneath the Belt Parkway. I see you shaking your head. You get, I don't, I can't even tell you how many hundreds.
Actually, Ocean Parkway is a state park, that the trail.
Is it really?
Yes, it's designated as a state park. So, both sides of the street are designated to state parkland.
That's interesting. I didn't, I did not know that.
The light lane that they just.
No wonder, no wonder it always looks so good. So, the proposal, the idea is, we spoke about this in length with the community board, is that we're, they don't want any vape shops or tattoo parlors or any kind of quote-unquote, you know, objectionable uses. So we've agreed with them to put in uses such as either local retail, such as a coffee shop or something like that, or medical. And we've worked with them on that. And that was another point that we've worked with them, just to give you the confidence that, you know, we're working through a lot of community issues. To the point of your point, there's not that much commercial there. This commercial would not be that big. All the commercial there is very small. The hospital is right across the street. It has its own coffee shop, of course, but also, there's a lot of people there that'll come out for coffee, take a break from the hospital, and want to get something to eat. Also, there's nothing local in the area, on the blocks behind us, over in Trump Village, behind us, that Fred Trump constructed many years ago. That housing has zero retail. So, a small little coffee shop or something that's locally serviced would improve in the community, we think, and that's what we spoke about at the community board level, and they agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gold?
Just a quick question. So, I guess I'm looking at the report from the community board. It speaks about some dialogue presumably that you had after it was voted down, where you brought to them this alternate proposal.
Yeah.
And that it was to be presented at the land use committee.
Well, thank you for bringing that up.
In January. Talk to us about that. What happened? Because we don't have that data.
That was meeting number seven.
Okay.
I told you we met a lot. We went back again. They've been very kind to me. They're very nice. The district manager, Eddie Marks, super nice guy. The land use committee, very nice, very, very amenable to communicating. So they let me keep coming back. Nobody's paying attention on their side to U-LR-P. Nobody's saying, oh, you're timed out. We can't talk. Everybody understands what we're trying to do. So I, the last time I went back to them after the no vote, we were hoping to get a yes vote at the committee. We came back with this R-seven X alternative. We lost at the committee by a vote of five-three. One of the people, the owner of Gar Giulio's, the restaurant, famous restaurant on Coney Island Boardwalk, was absent that day. I called him personally to dial in. He called in, and he, they wouldn't take his vote, so it would've been five-four. And the fifth person that was going to vote refused to vote because the Coney Island Business Improvement District was opposed to it at the time. As I just told you a moment ago, the Coney Island Business Improvement District, if they see this cut, Elena who runs it indicated to me that she could see herself not opposing it. Now, if she were to not oppose it, I think I could get a vote, just to bring it down to nitty-gritty, of five-five, which would be, or maybe even better, which would give me a support at the land use committee, which would give me a support at the full board, which would let me go to the, so if you understand why I didn't, it went that night to the committee, and when the vote was five-three, we pulled it. And Marion Cleaver is the district, is running the, she used to be Commissioner of Department of Corrections. She's running the land use committee at the community board, and everybody's been working together to try to find a way to get it, so that we could get over the objections. Again, almost every single objector that wasn't about the height of the building was about bringing more people to Brooklyn, that more people should not come to Brooklyn. It's too busy. Exact quotes were, place is crowded enough already. We don't need any more people. And that's why I'm trying to bring you, and we appreciate you engaging at this level for such a small project, so I'm trying to bring you so down into the discussion, because it's not just a matter of community board voting against it. There was a lot going on for a small little project.
Just one point, Philip. So, it sounds like from that, there's a possibility, I think to your earlier point, that it could be passed if you went back to the community board, but it certainly is not a certainty.
It's not a guarantee, but I certainly do have people that thought it was a good application and just wanted to see proof that I was able to actually cut it, like I said I was.
And then, then one other question, and it's, now it's probably you have that I don't. Is there a way to carve the area so that the designation is just applying to your building, not the other building that they're concerned about?
Yes. And again, that would be up to, we spoke about this, and the council member, Council Member Kagan has been incredibly cooperative. I've spoken to him probably seven or eight times. He made himself incredibly available. And like he's told me over and over again, anything that I have to do, nobody will accept. They won't accept that he's going to actually do it. And that relates to the fact that there's politics in the community. So, and that relates back to, I believe, to the origins of the people that live in the community, and with good reason, like I said. I mean, I'm Russian, of Russian descent, too. I grew up hearing my grandfather say quite a few things about, you know, his experiences over there. So I think they're right to have this concern about what government will do. I don't discount anybody's position. I don't discount Ari's. I don't discount the community board's, nor yours. It's just a tough position for everybody to be in, and I'm telling you what's going on, and you can make your decision what you see fit. I will abide by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the clarification in terms of, you know, what you think the community board thinks and what the community board has actually said in terms of, you know, facilitating sort of like understanding, but also clarifying, you know, what actually has been said on the record about it. That's, I appreciate that distinction. I also appreciate sort of the responses to some of the questions about the sustainability measures that have been raised by the Borough President. That's useful. I think the reason why you keep getting the questions is because we don't see how they're going to play out. We hear that you're thinking about it, and that's important, but I think we still don't see sort of exactly how that's going to play out in terms of the design, which is fair at this point. Um, I just wanted to comment on that. The, the question that I, that I still have, and this is based on, you know, the fact that this is a project that is heavily vulnerable to flooding. I think since we first heard it, it's been very clear that the department, uh, has, that the department has indicated, uh, your willingness to comply with requirements that are in place, that are triggered by the fact that this is at an area that is heavily vulnerable. Uh, but, you know, I'm not concerned that you're prepared to, eh, fulfill all the requirements, uh, coming from the building code, appendix G, and so forth. Um, however, you know, I, I feel that this is, this is unimportant, even though the, the size of the proposal and so forth is important, and, and I also understand that, you know, this is an opportunity to, eh, map a mandatory inclusionary housing that otherwise, you know, wouldn't be there, we wouldn't, wouldn't be doing a rezoning. But this is increasing the residential significantly. The racial equity report indicates that under thirty-nine percent of the population lives farther away than, um, a, a quarter mile to a subway station and to a bus stop, which means that access to public transit here is an issue. Now, we've, we've discussed also, you know, what comes first, and, and I trust that we're trying to think comprehensively here. The borough president has encouraged you to talk to the emergency, Office of Emergency Management to just understand, you know, how are we gonna evacuate the population here in the case of, uh, of an event? And so, I'm, I'm, I want to hear from you, sort of like, to what extent you've actually looked into this, what are some provisions that, eh, you know, you, we can, you can share at this point so that we can understand, you know, how to think about this, because quite honestly, the size of the project, the magnitude of the vulnerability to potential flooding here raises a big concern. And especially given the lack of access to public transit.
Uh, I, I can understand that, having, uh, experienced Sandy along with all of us, and especially that region where, uh, as I've heard over and over again, people spend the night on the Belt Parkway overpasses. Uh, so it certainly took it, the brunt of it. This project is going to be dry-floodproofed at, at the first floor, as you heard from Nellie before, and the first floor is going to be entirely commercial, so that's not putting any lives at risk down there, as far as evacuation goes, we are on the flood evacuation route, obviously, uh, the hurricane evacuation route. Uh, we're also, uh, we have not yet brought it to the mayor's office of emergency management, but we're also in front of a bus stop as well. So I know that most of the area is not near mass transit, we're not right next to a subway, and then again, during a flood in Brighton Beach, I don't think the subway is really elevated there, so you're a little safer. But the idea is that we are near mass transit, and we're right near the on-ramp to the Belt Parkway. Uh, there is parking for, there will be parking for aid motor vehicles, uh, downstairs, so it's presumed that some of the people that live there will have cars. Uh, I can understand the concern for putting people in a, in a vulnerable location, uh, but I would, uh, uh, just simply state that we are across the street from a ho- a hospital, uh, right on a major arterial roadway. Uh, so there are means for people to escape, we're not necessarily in a remote location, necessarily, uh, such as the Rockways or anything like that, but we would like to bring the project, once we get to an approval, to the mayor's office, uh, to speak to the mayor's office of emergency management, and go through a flood evacuation plan, and hash it out, but we haven't gone there yet. Uh, we'd be happy to, I don't even know if I have a project to get approved yet, so that's why we haven't gone there yet, but once we see that we have traction, I will take it there, and as a matter of fact, if I saw that we'd have a problem right now, I'd make a commitment to you right now, and we'll go there tomorrow and meet with them, but right now, I don't even know if we have a project that's gonna survive past next week, so, uh, but we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, thank you for that, I, I just feel that, be, again, because of the magnitude of the vulnerability here, this is something that should be in place, should already be in place, at least some, eh, additional information in terms of, like, hey, what's the closest shelter, how are people gonna get there, really? Uh, some, some, some initial preliminary sort of, uh, eh, assessment in terms of, how are you gonna be addressing this, other than just saying you're gonna be complying with re- building code requirements?
Well, we can certainly give you a, a paragraph stating of our intents, of what, what we intend to do to develop a plan. That's not a problem at all, we just don't have that plan actually created yet. But you're inspiring me now, and you're making me think that as I'm coming in now with more projects, when they are in flood zones, that I should be addressing this in a much earlier stage, and I'll be doing that as I move ahead with other projects and everything before you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome, thanks for your questions.
Mr. Palatnik, thank you very much, uh, for your
Thank you.
time and your explanation and your very specific request today, uh, it's good to see you.
Sorry to, sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay, um, all right, with that, uh, I do not see anybody else wishing to testify on calendar number nineteen and twenty at, uh, fifty-eight Nixon Court, so we will close the hearing on that item. Uh, Madam Secretary, is there any other business before the commission today?
No, Chair Gradnik, there is no other business before the commission, but I do have some public information to share. For those of you who are unable to, or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the N Y C Engage portal, through D C P's website, or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, one twenty Broadway, thirty-first floor, New York, New York, one zero two seven one.
Great, thank you very much, uh, with appreciation to the staff of the Department of City Planning, uh, members of the public who came, uh, to be with us today in person or on Zoom, and to all of you commissioners, uh, we appreciate it, and with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice afternoon, Brooklyn.
The time is eleven A M.